(inaudible)
Good evening, and welcome to the September 23, 2012 meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. I would ask each board member to please introduce themselves and mention the ward in which they reside.
Richard Cristoforo.
Sam Siccarelli, Third Ward.
Stuart Dixon, Second Ward.
Jay Kennedy, Fourth Ward.
Rosemary Kerr, Second Ward. And I would also ask the representatives of the City of Lake Forest to introduce themselves.
Catherine Sterniak.
Megan O'Neil.
Marlo Del Persio.
And Chairman Kerr, just for the record, you do have a quorum present with Board Members Frankson and Board Member Culbertson absent. Thank you. First, we would like to move to approve the minutes of the September 26, 2011 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second. All right, then the proceedings are...the approval of the minutes is approved. And now, before us, we have an appeal of an administrative decision. The board will hear an appeal of the issuance of a building permit for the construction of a single-family residence and other structures ...and other structures on property addressed as 27 West Onwensia Road. on property addressed as 27 West Onwensia Road. The appeal has been filed by Leonard Shiflett, Quarles &amp; Brady, on behalf of Kerry Friedman, 51 West Onwensia Road. We've been requested to have the board go into executive session to deliberate on the appeal. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We will remove ourselves for an executive session and return...
If I might interrupt very quickly.
Sure.
Just to clarify, the motion for this executive session is not...since we haven't heard any of the evidence for the appeal yet, we can deliberate on evidence presented after it is presented. At this point, I would recommend moving to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
I amend my motion to reflect that we're going in to deal with the pending litigation on this subject.
Second.
And that would need a roll call vote.
Chairman Kerr?
Yes, I agree.
Stuart Dixon?
Approve.
Board Member Siccarelli?
Approve.
Board Member Kennedy?
Approve.
And Board Member Cristoforo?
Approve.
I may adjourn.
And the board will reconvene in regular session at approximately 6:30. The appeal has been filed by Leonard Shiflett, Quarles &amp; Brady, on behalf of Kerry Friedman, 51 West Onwensia Road. We've been requested to have the board go into executive session to deliberate on the appeal. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We will remove ourselves for an executive session and return...
If I might interrupt very quickly.
Sure.
Just to clarify, the motion for this executive session is not...since we haven't heard any of the evidence for the appeal yet, we can deliberate on evidence presented after it is presented. At this point, I would recommend moving to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
I amend my motion to reflect that we're going in to deal with the pending litigation on this subject.
Second.
And that would need a roll call vote.
Chairman Kerr?
Yes, I agree.
Stuart Dixon?
Approve.
Board Member Siccarelli?
Approve.
Board Member Kennedy?
Approve.
And Board Member Cristoforo?
Approve.
And the board will reconvene in regular session at approximately 6:30. (end of transcript)
All right, we are now back in open session. And we'd like to introduce the item, which is an appeal of the issuance of a building permit for the construction of single-family residence and other structures on property addressed as 27 West on Wensia Road. The appeal was filed by Leonard Shiflett, Quarles &amp; Brady, on behalf of Carrie Friedman, 51 West on Wensia Road. And at this time, I'd like to ask all members of the board if they have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
None. All right, I would also now like to swear in any parties intending to testify at tonight's meeting. Would you all come forward to the railing, please?
Actually, it might be easier, since we have a court reporter here, as testimony proceeds, anyone that's testifying, the court reporter can swear in individually prior to the testimony, so that it's reflected in the record. That might be the easier way to do it, instead of a group swear-in, if that's fine with the board.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's fine. Thank you all. Now, we are open for a consideration of any preliminary motions. Then we'll move to the opening statement.
Madam Chairman, there was an exchange between Mr. Philippi and myself and counsel for the owners of 27 West today about the course in which we're going to proceed today. This is an appeal by Ms. Friedman of the action taken by the city. And it seems to me that the parties are the appellant, Ms. Friedman and the City of Lake Forest. And it's unclear as to what role, if any, the owners of 27 West play in this proceeding. And I had want to raise that as an issue. And I believe it's not a tripartite hearing, it's really one between the city...
Excuse me, can I ask that you speak into the microphone? You can take it out of the bracket, if you'd like.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is that better? My point being, I think it's really a proceeding in which Ms. Friedman has appealed the decision of the city. And the two parties to this hearing ought to be Ms. Friedman as the appellant and the city as the respondent.
To the extent you have an objection to the procedure that the city is undertaking this evening, and this will go for many of the objections for the evening, we will note the objections in the record, and all objections will be considered as a whole with the case. So, we can have your objection noted in the record, and we'll proceed as outlined in the agenda. And then, those will be decided upon determination of the entire issue.
And I would appreciate if each speaker introduced themselves prior to beginning their speech, and identify themselves as to how they are connected with the case. Thank you.
And just for the record, I'm Leonard Shiflett, and I represent Carrie Friedman, the appellant.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have...
My name is John Quinn, I'm here along with Robert Churchill, on behalf of the owners of the property, Gopal and Rajul Balala. I have a couple of objections that I would like to make for the record. And they're based on Section 46-20E1 of the zoning code. And that requires that an appeal be filed within 45 days of the action that was complained of. The lot size itself, which is Section A of their appeal, I'm sorry, it was Section A of their appeal, was decided when the plat was approved by the city council back on January 5th, 1981. So, more than 45 days have elapsed since then. Likewise, the setback lines were decided by virtue of the lot-in-depth subdivision that was approved in January of 1981. More than 45 days has passed since that occurred. Section D, complaints about the building scale, this isn't the first appeal on the building scale. The appeal, the first appeal that they had last year, appealing the decision of the zoning, the decision of the building review board, addressed building size, and more than 45 days have elapsed since that decision was rendered on September 6, 2001. Section C of the appeal questions compensatory storage, that was also dealt with on the September 6, 2001 appeal. More than 45 days have passed since then.
Okay, the objections are noted and will be considered on the determination of the entire issue. Do you have responses to those?
May I make a short response to those objections?
Sure.
Again, Leonard Shiflett, on behalf of the appellant, Carrie Friedman. None of the matters that counsel has referred to became of any importance until the grant of the building permit. The size of the lot, the setbacks, there were no setbacks, because there was no structure built or proposed to be built. Therefore, these are all ripe for consideration by this board, since they came into being and became an issue with the issuance of the building permit. That's what we're appealing. And we have several bases, but it is the action of the issuance of the building permit that is the issue before this board. Thank you.
And we will now hear the opening statement of the petitioner.
Good evening, once again, I'm Leonard Shiflett, and with me is Michael Reinhardt. And we're from the firm of Quarles &amp; Brady. We represent Carrie Friedman, who is the appellant in this case. And the issue that we bring before this board is the issuance of a building permit that was issued on October, I believe, October 19. And notice of appeal was filed on December 2nd, which was within the 45-day period. So, we have met that requirement. Ms. Friedman asks that this board revoke the issuance of the building permit and direct the owners of 27 West on Wensia Road to remove all structures they have erected and to restore the 27 West property to the condition as it existed prior to the issuance of the building permit. Now, there are several bases for our appeal. But first, I'd like to address an issue that has been raised in other quarters, and that is whether or not Ms. Friedman is an aggrieved person. Counsel did not raise that as one of his objections. I believe she is an aggrieved person, and therefore is entitled to make this appeal. First, she owns the property that lies adjacent to the 27 West property, and therefore, her property values, the use of her property, her access to light and air are all impacted by the building that's being built at 27 West. And therefore, if the building does not comply with the zoning code of the City of Lake Forest, she is an adversely affected party. Now, counsel alluded to some of the grounds for the appeal. I believe that the appeal has been furnished to the board members, but I'd like briefly to go over the major points that we're going to address this evening. And the first is that the residence is within 50 feet...
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we are now back in open session. And we'd like to introduce the item, which is an appeal of the issuance of a building permit for the construction of single-family residence and other structures on property addressed as 27 West Onwensia Road. The appeal was filed by Leonard Schiflett, Quarles &amp; Brady, on behalf of Carrie Friedman, 51 West Onwensia Road. And at this time, I'd like to ask all members of the board if they have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
None. All right. I would also now like to swear in any parties intending to testify at tonight's meeting. Would you all come forward to the railing, please?
Chairman, there are members who need to swear in.
Actually, it might be easier, since we have a court reporter here. As testimony proceeds, anyone that's testifying, the court reporter can swear in individually prior to the testimony so that it's reflected in the record. That might be the easier way to do it instead of a group swear-in, if that's fine with the board.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's fine. Thank you all. Now, we are open for a consideration of any preliminary motions. Then we'll move to the opening statement.
Madam Chairman, there was an exchange between Mr. Philippi and myself and counsel for the owners of 27 West today about the course in which we're going to proceed today. This is an appeal by Ms. Friedman of the action taken by the city. And it seems to me that the parties are the appellant, Ms. Friedman and the City of Lake Forest. And it's unclear as to what role, if any, the owners of 27 West play in this proceeding. And I had want to raise that as an issue. And I believe it's not a tripartite hearing, it's really one between the city--
Excuse me, can I ask that you speak into the microphone? You can take it out of the bracket if you'd like.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that better? My point being, I think it's really a proceeding in which Ms. Friedman has appealed the decision of the city. And the two parties to this hearing ought to be Ms. Friedman as the appellant and the city as the respondent.
To the extent you have an objection to the procedure that the city is undertaking this evening, and this will go for many of the objections for the evening, we will note the objections in the record, and all objections will be considered as a whole with the case. So, we can have your objection noted in the record, and we'll proceed as outlined in the agenda. And then, those will be decided upon determination of the entire issue.
And I would appreciate if each speaker introduced themselves prior to beginning their speech and identify themselves as to how they are connected with the case. Thank you.
And just for the record, I'm Leonard Schiflett, and I represent Carrie Friedman, the appellant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have--
My name is John Quinn. I'm here along with Robert Churchill on behalf of the owners of the property, Gopal and Rajul Bilala. I have a couple of objections that I would like to make for the record. And they're based on Section 46-20E1 of the zoning code. And that requires that an appeal be filed within 45 days of the action that was complained of. The lot size itself, which is Section A of their appeal, I'm sorry, it was Section A of their appeal, was decided when the plat was approved by the city council back on January 5th, 1981. So, more than 45 days have elapsed since then. Likewise, the setback lines were decided by virtue of the lot-in-depth subdivision that was approved in January of 1981. More than 45 days has passed since that occurred. Section D, complaints about the building scale. This isn't the first appeal on the building scale. The appeal, the first appeal that they had last year, appealing the decision of the zoning, the decision of the building review board, addressed building size, and more than 45 days have elapsed since that decision was rendered on September 6, 2001. Section C of the appeal questions compensatory storage. That was also dealt with on the September 6, 2001 appeal. More than 45 days have passed since then.
Okay, the objections are noted and will be considered on the determination of the entire issue. Do you have responses to those?
May I make a short response to those objections? Sure. Just for the record. Again, Leonard Schiflett on behalf of the appellant, Carrie Friedman. None of the matters that counsel has referred to became of any importance until the grant of the building permit. The size of the lot, the setbacks, there were no setbacks because there was no structure built or proposed to be built. Therefore, these are all ripe for consideration by this board since they came into being and became an issue with the issuance of the building permit. That's what we're appealing. And we have several bases, but it is the action of the issuance of the building permit that is the issue before this board. Thank you.
And we will now hear the opening statement of the petitioner.
Good evening, once again. I'm Leonard Schiflett, and with me is Michael Reinhardt. And we're from the firm of Quarles &amp; Brady. We represent Carrie Friedman, who is the appellant in this case. And the issue that we bring before this board is the issuance of a building permit that was issued on October, I believe, October 19. And notice of appeal was filed on December 2, which was within the 45-day period. So, we have met that requirement. Ms. Friedman asks that this board revoke the issuance of the building permit and direct the owners of 27 West Onwensia Road to remove all structures they have erected and to restore the 27 West property to the condition as it existed prior to the issuance of the building permit. Now, there are several bases for our appeal. But first, I'd like to address an issue that has been raised in other quarters, and that is whether or not Ms. Friedman is an aggrieved person. Counsel did not raise that as one of his objections. I believe she is an aggrieved person and therefore is entitled to make this appeal. First, she owns the property that lies adjacent to the 27 West property, and therefore, her property values, the use of her property, her access to light and air are all impacted by the building that's being built at 27 West. And therefore, if the building does not comply with the zoning code of the City of Lake Forest, she is an adversely affected party. Now, counsel alluded to some of the grounds for the appeal. I believe that the appeal has been furnished to the board members, but I'd like briefly to go over the major points that we're going to address this evening. And the first is that the residence is within 50 feet of the front lot line of 27 West. In fact, it's only 20 feet south of the lot line that separates these two properties. And it might be helpful, if I may, use the easel just to show you a plat, the plat that we've incorporated in our documents, but help point out how these two properties lie next to one another, if I may approach. I'll use my fingers as opposed to a pointer, if I may. The two properties both have access to Onwensia Road, this being the northerly direction, east and west. This is the Skokie Creek ditch, river, or whatever you want, however it's referred to. And the properties lie with that to the west of them. At one time, this was one parcel of property, and it ran, if you follow my direction to the south, down to almost the bottom of this document, over to the river, and then back up to Onwensia Road. In 1981, as counsel mentioned, it was subdivided, and two lots were created. And we'll have other witnesses who'll demarcate these a little better for you. But essentially, this line that I'm pointing to running east and west, then to the northeast, and then to the east, and then due north, separates Lot 1, which is Carrie Friedman's property, and is improved with a house. The house was there before 1981, when the subdivision took place. The balance of the property, which lies to the south, has this piece, and then an access area of 45 feet wide coming down, is Lot 2, which is 27 West, and the subject of the building permit that was issued. And as you can see, and you'll, this is from the document, which is Exhibit 1 in your package, although we've taken off all the writing on the side so we could blow it up and make it bigger. The only structures on this property were, were now owned by Ms. Friedman. There's nothing built on Lot 27. The second grounds of appeal relate to the size of the lot. Under the lot-in-depth section of the zoning code, Section 46-8, the lot-in-depth, which this is, since it gets access through this narrow point coming down to the south, the requirement is 66,000 square feet. Now, the designation here shows a lot size of 81,986. However, under the zoning code, the access area, which is this area lying north of the line shown here that separates, most of which separates the two properties, the area north of that is the access area, which comprises over 21,000 square feet, leaving a little over 60,000 square feet available in Lot 2. Therefore, Lot 2 does not meet the 66,000 square foot requirement. The third ground for appeal relates to the compensatory storage water, I'm sorry, compensatory stormwater storage plan that has been put in place with respect to this development. Now, you will hear in the evidence today that there was a prior stormwater storage plan, and that, if you could put up number 7. This was the approved stormwater storage plan back in approximately 19, I'm sorry, 2008, during a prior development. And what you'll hear testimony about are, if I can do this right, are this area is a storage area, compensatory storage area, and this is a compensatory storage area. Now, this is what was approved by the Lake County Water, Stormwater Commission back in 2009. Now, what has been submitted to the City of Lake Forest, and part of the approved plans, we understand, if you go to Tab 10, is this plan. And I have another one we'll use with one of the witnesses that'll show you in a little more detail. But now, the compensatory storage area is this area, this area, and this area down here. Now, a couple of important things to concentrate on are this area down here. And the reason I say that is this line is a regulatory floodway line, which is also shown over here. Now, you may have heard this in other cases, you may be very, very familiar with the difference between floodplains and floodways. But as the evidence will show, you cannot build in the floodway, which is the area down here. Nor can you use the floodway, as they're doing here, for compensatory storage of disturbances that have been created up here in the floodplain. As a matter of fact, you can't use this at all for compensatory storage. The state and the county regulate this area, and they prohibit any grading in this area except for the purpose of improving the flow down to the water. This is an effort to dig a hole to get, to store water in the event of a storm. And this has not been approved by Lake County and differs from the one that was approved. If you go back to the other one, please. You can see the distinction. Here you have the two areas outside the floodway, and that's what was approved by the Stormwater Management Commission. And the fourth item, if you could go back to number 10, but before you do that, if you go to number 9. This is a fairly recent letter from the Army Corps of Engineers, which regulates putting water into, I believe, into the Skokie Creek. And if you go down the page, please, you'll say, you'll see that they say, sorry, that this verification covers only your activity to be described in your notification and as shown on the plans entitled Utility Plan 27 West Onwensia Road, City of Lake Forest, Sheet 5 of 6, dated December 29, 2009. Now, if you go to number 10, please. And this was for the drainage of a single house. Now, what we have is we're draining this area, this area, and this area into the Skokie Creek. That has not been approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. Now, these are the principal reasons why we believe the building permit should be revoked. And now, the question I'm sure is going through your mind is, wait a minute, this is under management of other jurisdictions. Why are we getting involved? You're unfortunately getting involved because the provisions of the State of Illinois, I believe if you go to Tab 16. Well, this is one, and there are a couple of others that I'll get to later, I want to burden you with it now. But it simply says that if a municipality or county issues a regulatory floodway development permit not in accordance with this part or fails to meet the criteria, then the department will rescind the municipality or county's authority to administer the department's regulatory floodway. This is the Illinois Department of Natural Resources that has authority under state statutes to remedy this. And as I'll come to later in this presentation, the state statute requires that you not issue a building permit if it causes a violation of the regulatory regime that we were talking about here about building in the floodway. So, that's an additional reason why the building permit that was issued in this case should be revoked. And unless you have some questions at this point, I'll yield the floor to make an opening statement by the city.
Thank you. Is the director prepared to make an opening statement?
Thank you, Chairman Carr. The city is not intending to put on a presentation on this matter. We are certainly here to respond to questions, but at this time, we have no presentation.
Thank you.
Everything we do have has been entered into the record. You've received that information as part of your packets.
Then we would move to opening statements of other interested parties. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you. I'd like to, I think, start out by giving you a little bit of a history of this property. Back in 1991, Don and Demi Dadas created Dadas Subdivision, which consisted of two lots. And he, and counsel pointed that out to you, the lot up here and the lot down here. The subdivision was approved by the Lake Forest Plan Commission on December 15, 1980, and then by the Lake Forest City Council on January 5, 1981. Then, in 1985, the Dadas sold Lot 1 to Kenneth and Carol Radke, and they in turn, in 1988, sold Lot 1 to Carrie Friedman. That's the lot up here. Later that same year, in 1988, the Bilalas bought Lot 2 from the Dadas, Lot 2 being down here. Now, the appeal sets forth six bases, and I'd like to kind of briefly, very briefly, go through each one. The first one has to do with the lot size. And as counsel stated, in a lot-in-depth subdivision, which is what this is, the lot size has to be 66,000 square feet. And I'm going to bring this over closer so you can see it. Here you'll see that the lot goes down 285 feet, and right there, it's 45 feet wide. Then it splits out into a wider area. The 45 by 285-foot piece is the access area. And if you subtract that, which is about 12,000 square feet from the total amount, you're well above the 66,000 square feet. And I'd suggest that the Plan Commission and the city council knew what they were doing back in 1981 when they created, or they allowed a lot to be created with this configuration. They knew it had to have a minimum of 66,000 square feet, and a lot was created that way to have two buildable lots on it. One, which the Dadas already lived in, and one that they would profit by, by selling later on, which they did to the Bilalas. I'd also point out, which is Area B, where they talked about the lot setbacks. Specifically, the section that I'd like to point out to the city council is 46-8B of the zoning ordinance. It's entitled applicability. And under applicability, it says, in quote, "The regulation contained in this section are applicable only to lot-in-depth subdivisions approved after May 7, 1979, except for the provisions of 46-8D yard requirements, which shall apply to all lots of record unless otherwise designated on the plat of subdivision." So, if the plat of subdivision, in this case, designates a different setback, that's the setback that we'll control. And again, if we look at this plat of subdivision, we'll see on the north line of Lot 2, there's a 20-foot setback line. And that, of course, was created by Mr. Dadas, Mr. and Mrs. Dadas, when they owned it so that they could get two buildable lots on that lot. So, I would respectfully suggest that with respect to A and B, those criteria are easily met. With respect to C, we're going to have testimony tonight from our engineer, Bud Reed, that's regarding the compensatory storage. And he's going to tell you how material is coming off of this site, not going on. So, there's no fill being put in the floodway or the floodplain. It's being taken out. So, there's going to be more storage on the property than there was before. With respect to D, which has to do with the size of the structure, we have our architect here, Sean Purnell. And the City of Lake Forest gives us a workbook to work through to make sure that we've satisfied the bulk requirement, the size of the building requirement. And he'll go through that with you. They've been through it with the staff. We'll have a copy of that for you, for your review later on. But you'll see that we've made that bulk requirement that was set by the city when we were doing our years of planning on this project. With respect to E, which also relates to compensatory storage and wetlands, Mr. Reed will again testify that the only wetland, he'll testify about the compensatory storage, the only wetland on the property is an isolated wetland on the property, which we've mitigated. And in fact, the Bilalas are here tonight, and they can tell you that they've spent about, because they invested in a bank which has other, not a money bank, but a wetland bank, which creates other wetland areas, and they paid $58,000 to mitigate this wetland into that so there can be other wetlands on the property, or so that this wetland could be mitigated. And finally, oh, not finally, Section F, which relates to the discharge in the Skokie River, or drainage ditch, you'll see Mr., and in fact, in the drawing we were showing before when counsel was giving his opening statement, there's one outflow that goes from the property that we're creating into the Skokie River. That's what was approved, and that's what you'll see on the plan. In his appeal, he raises things that they've heard that there's other outlets, outfalls, but there's just the one. There is another on the property, but that existed back at the time. It doesn't drain our property, and it existed back at the time of the subdivision. And in fact, there's even an easement right down in the bottom of the plat that shows that outfall. And last, they've raised some concerns about some smart vents. We don't have a basement in this property. We have a, it's essentially a crawl space, can't access it from the house, can't store anything in there. And we have vents in case there is flooding on the property where the water can move into the foundation of the house and then move back out. And Mr. Reed's here with an actual smart vent, which they've questioned, so he can give you a little show and tell on how that works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, are there statements from any other interested parties?
I'm a neighbor.
And would you please state your name and where you live, your residence? Okay.
My name is Catherine Saville, and I have lived in Lake Forest for over 50 years. My first home was on Illinois Road, where I was raised. Currently, I live at 30 Honeysuckle Road, where we have lived for the past 12 years, and our home is located directly behind this property. I'm here tonight because we are extremely concerned and honestly frightened by the prospect of flooding, which could be caused by the construction in question. Each year, we have seen the retaining pond located next to our property filled with three to four feet of water. I have seen photographs of the Onwensia property in spring, when heavy rainfall creates a pond equally as deep on the property, which is to be developed. The loss of over approximately 60 trees on this property will create no natural protection for the intense spring rains, which have happened each year since we have been on Honeysuckle. I understand that they were given, the developers were given authority to cut down 20 trees, but the naturality is approximately 60. Dividing the properties, there is a shallow ditch, which catches overflow rain. I am fearful that if the proposed construction, which is questionable at best, fails, my home will be flooded each spring, destroying our property value. I am going on record with these concerns. Should this potential danger occur because the vulnerability of the property continues to be approved, I need to know that there will be some recourse. Our family is not in a position to lose our home. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to express my and my mother's concern.
Can I very quickly, I'm sorry, since we didn't do the group swearing, could I have the court reporter swear you in for your testimony? Do you swear that your testimony was the truth for the record? And we'll do that before, for any other interested party testimonies. We won't do it for the attorneys, but when we have individuals speaking, we'll make sure that we get that done ahead of time next time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other interested parties who would like to speak at this time? Then we would move to presentation of evidence by the petitioner.
I understand from council's comments that Mr. Purnell is here, so I would call him as a witness. Do you just have to witness stand, or do you have a seat for him? Mr. Purnell?
I'm sorry, before, before we start any testimony, could you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Sean Purnell, S-H-A-W-N-P-U-R-N-E-L-L.
Thank you, and if you could speak up just for the benefit of the court reporter, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And just kind of complete that, would you mind giving us your residence for the record?
1607 North Avenue, Round Lake Beach, Illinois.
Mr. Purnell, we've not had the opportunity to meet before, but if you were here earlier, you know my name is Leonard Shufflett, and I represent Kerry Friedman in this matter. You're the architect of record for the proposed residence for 27 West Onwensia, is that correct?
That's correct.
And were you involved in doing the calculations for the, I call it the bulk requirements that you have to go through with the City of Lake Forest to justify the size of the house that's being built?
Yes.
Mr. Purnell, I'm going to have what's, a document marked here as Exhibit 18, and I'll hand you a copy of that. Mr. Purnell, you have a document in front of you that's been marked as, it would be marked as 27 West Onwensia in this proceeding, Exhibit 18, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you familiar with this document?
Yes, I am.
And were you involved in the preparation of this document?
Yes, I was.
This was presented to the City of Lake Forest, was it?
Correct.
And you meant to be truthful in the information you provided here to the city, is that correct?
Of course.
And you made every effort to be very careful on your calculations?
That's correct.
And in making your calculations, of course, you represented the Bilalas, is that right?
That's correct.
And as a professional, if there was a way of looking at something and giving them the benefit of the doubt, I'm sure you did.
I don't believe that any of these are subjective in any way. There's essentially each of the design elements are tabulated via the CAD drawings that I prepared and presented to the City of Lake Forest.
Okay. Have you done other projects in the City of Lake Forest?
When I was working under a residential architect, yes, it's, it's been a few years, but yeah.
Well, more than five years?
Yes.
Six or seven years?
That's about right, seven years, I believe.
Okay. But you, you're familiar with the zoning code for the City of Lake Forest, would that be correct?
Correct.
And you're familiar with how to calculate access areas, is that right?
Yes. Well, the access area that's presented in the bulk book is not meant to be a tabulation of any of the engineering relating to the project, but we were directed by the City of Lake Forest to remove what we're calling the garden area part of the lot, so as to minimize the impact of the bulk of the architectural project on the site.
Okay, and you understood that to be excluded as part of the access area, is that right?
No, it was excluded as part of the minimization of the architectural bulk of the project.
And did you put a note to that effect in your document?
A note to which effect?
That, that when you were calculating the access area, you were doing something different than you would have done otherwise.
No, this is just a pretty standard square-by-square workbook, where with the help of the staff, we were directed to enter a particular value, so we did.
So are there any other numbers in here that aren't your numbers?
No, I don't believe it's anyone's particular number, but rather, in conjunction with staff, we have to make a determination as to which parts of the lot are going to allow the size of the architectural building.
Okay, and you calculated, if you look on page 1, you calculated the access easement for the property is 21,006 feet, is that right?
Yeah, again, this is the access flag, and then in addition, the garden area, the expanded portion of the lot.
And that's part of the access area, correct?
No, it is not. It's part of the, it's part of the lot, the buildable lot proper, but was deducted in order to, in my opinion, make considerable effort to reduce the size of the architectural building on-site.
Let me flip up of the page we're talking about here, and the number I'm referring to is where you deduct 21,006 square feet for the access area.
Correct.
And now you're telling us that that's not the access area, is that right?
No, this is the flag portion plus the garden portion, the expanded area of the lot.
Now, what's the minimal width of an R4 lot?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I mentioned that I don't know that number off the top of my head. I don't have a plot in front of me.
I have a copy of the zoning code, which I can play, that you look at, and I'll have it marked as Exhibit 19. And in particular, you can look at it if you want, but I opened it to computer page 50, Section 10. I'm sorry, it's, I need another arm. In particular, I'm going to refer you to page 50, which deals with setback requirements and minimum lot. Section 46-38, R4 single-family residences. You're welcome to look at anything in there, too. But now I hand you the page that shows the minimum lot width for an R4 lot?
I believe so.
And what does it show as the minimum lot width?
For a single family, 150 feet.
Okay. Now, if the, the entry way the, the entry, the access area is 45 feet across, is that right? On, on the, for the Bilala property?
Uh huh, yeah.
And that's shown up here. That's not the minimum width of the lot?
I'm sure that there's a reference for a lot in depth. This doesn't, I don't see here the exceptions and the other contingencies that is relatively complicated zoning code for the lot in depths.
Okay. But you would include, you're including all the 45 feet strip as the access area, is that right?
That is the access area, correct.
Okay. Well, let's assume that the access area was 50 feet wide, would you include the entire strip at 55, 50 feet wide?
I don't know why we're considering a hypothetical. We have an adopted site plan that's approved, so we'll consider this site plan.
Okay, but my question is, if you had, if you had a, if this access area is 45 feet, say 100 feet coming down, that would all be in the access area, correct?
I'm not sure, off the top of my head, what the governing rules are for the maximum or minimum width of an access area.
And in fact, you don't reach 150 feet wide on this lot till after you get down to the line that would really be the north line of the Bilala property, is that right? This is the first point where you could reach 150 feet wide.
Well, again, I think part of what we're considering is the exception where the setbacks, the guidelines, the dimensions, the particulars of the lot govern as it is adopted and approved by the City of Lake Forest.
Okay, but I mean, if I'm not holding this close enough for you to see, this point where I'm pointing at is the north line of the Bilala lot.
Right.
That's the first point of their property that's at least 150 feet wide.
To the, to the extent that that's relevant, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Purnell.
Yes, please, if you have any questions
Thank you.
for Mr. Purnell, or?
As long as, as long as we have Mr. Purnell up here, perhaps it would be appropriate for me to ask questions with regard to council's questions and, and the testimony that I would release from him in our part of the case, or we can just wait till later on.
I'm just going to check with our council here.
If there are no objections from the petitioner, that would be fine.
We have no objection. I have a copy of the workbook for each of the members of the board here, Mr. Churchill, so that we'll have that as part of the testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Purnell, could you step up here for a moment? If we could give the board a closer look at this plat of subdivision. Now, in your testimony earlier, you made reference to what you called the garden area. Could you show the, could you show the members of the, of the board where that garden area is?
Whoever is speaking will need to have the microphone, please.
Sorry. There's an intermediate portion of the lot here directly after the access easement proper, which is this linear portion of the lot. It widens out, as was stated before, obviously to be included, to allow this to be a buildable lot, as was noted by staff on several occasions. This area is, we're calling the garden area. It's, you can't build the house on it, but it's part of the lot.
Now, when you did the bulk calculations in, what did you, what did you call that booklet that council showed you?
City of Lake Forest Building Scale Workbook.
Now, when you did those calculations, did you take the garden area out?
That's correct.
And why did you do that?
As part of the architectural design, obviously, one of the concerns we anticipated and that One, a concern that we anticipated and that staff made clear to us was that we had to be very careful to not put an oversized building on this piece of property. One of the ways that we ensured that was to generate the building scale workbook accurately, of course, but then also, this garden section of the home was omitted from the total lot, which had the net effect of reducing the overall size of the bulk, that the large, large size of the home that the Bilalas could build on this project. So that's, we were directed to omit it as part of the architectural design.
So had you included that, you, you could have designed a larger structure on the property, correct?
That's correct.
Now, do you have a copy of that workbook there in front of you?
I do, yes.
Now, what is, can you just explain simply what is building scale?
The City of Lake Forest provides a very clear, but pretty detailed way to account for the size, the visual impact of the building. It's a step-by-step process where you take into consideration not only the walkable square footage, what we would typically call the size of the building, but also things like the height. the height, design elements, things that visually add to the overall impression of size and bulk of the building. So it's not merely a pure square footage calculation, but pains are taken to make sure that the overall height and impression of the building stays in line with the appropriate size of the lot.
And can you take the board through just a brief description of what went on in the review process?
We met with many times over the course of more than a year, almost monthly with the building review board, where we received input and implemented changes both to the aesthetics and the overall look and character of the building, but also on how we were going to calculate the bulk, whether or not certain portions of the building would be adding to the overall feeling of bulk. So pretty intensive process we went through with the City of Lake Forest.
Now, does this property have a basement?
No, there's nothing that could be classified as a basement here.
And what does it have?
It has what we're calling a crawl space. It's uninhabitable, technically, typically a crawl space. We normally think of it as being accessible from inside the home. You could still put boxes down there, et cetera. In this case, it's accessible only from the outside, it's completely uninhabitable.
And...
Could I interrupt counsel? If anyone's going to elicit evidence with respect to, and I should have mentioned this earlier, item D of our appeal, which relates to building scale objections, we're withdrawing the drawing objection.
Okay.
Then I'm not going to go on with any more questions on building scale.
All right, so we will note that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I did have some redirect questions.
For Mr. Purnell?
Could you just restate what you said for the...
Okay, just, I thought I was loud enough, but I'll be glad. We are withdrawing our objection, which is denoted as item D, which says the proposed residential structure, which the building permit allows to be constructed violates the regulations governing building scale as provided in the building code.
Okay, thank you.
For the convenience of the board, I'd like to have Mr. Purnell approach so we can show you some in detail some of these questions that we have.
Since we do have the court reporter here, would you please indicate what exhibit you have?
We'll, we'll mark this as 1A because it's a derivation of exhibit 1.
Okay.
That was previously marked. Mr. Purnell, you mentioned a garden area, and I'm looking at this, and I don't see anything marked garden area. Can you show us where it's marked, a garden area?
That's a designation that we determine so that we'll a portion of the site that's intermediate.
Okay.
That's portion of the site that is what?
Intermediate.
Thank you.
And I don't even see an area that's marked access. Can you show me an area that's marked access?
Those areas aren't marked, they're determined as part of the process with the staff in the City of Lake Forest.
Okay. And someone sitting at the zoning ordinance, sitting down reading this, they have to go by what's in the zoning ordinance zoning code, isn't that right?
When you say reading this, what do you mean?
By this, I meant reading the zoning code, sitting in their home, sitting in their office, they have to go by what's in the zoning code, isn't that right?
Typically, those points of data and opinions are collected and produced by the staff, and then they are, you know, that's part of the conversation between staff and the building review board to the extent that I'm privy to that.
Okay. But if you don't have privy to that, you can only go by what's in the zoning code, is that right?
Okay. To determine what exactly?
What an access area is?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
If I may, at this time, I would ask that Doug White be administer the oath.
So would you please write him please two square for the testimony about changes proceeding, moving to, and nothing but which is not be bad?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. White, would you please state your full name and spell your last name for the records?
Douglas White, last name W-H-I-T-E.
And are you employed, Mr. White?
Yes, sir.
And by whom are you employed?
Green Guard Incorporated.
And what is the business of Green Guard Incorporated?
We are engineers, surveyors, and planners.
And in that regard, what do you do for Green Guard Incorporated?
Site development, whether it be commercial or residential.
And could you be, tell us a little bit more about what's involved in site development?
We will prepare a topography or a survey if needed, and take the building that an architect designs and their site plan, and apply basic civil engineering practices to provide utilities and make sure the site is properly drained.
And in order to provide those kinds of services, do you have any educational background?
Yes, I graduated from University of Illinois at Chicago in 2001.
And what was your degree in?
Civil engineering.
And after that, did you receive any license as an engineer?
Yes, I passed the professional engineer's exam and subsequently become a professional engineer.
And in connection with being a professional engineer, have you had an opportunity to physically go out and look at the Friedman property?
Yes, I have been on site.
And if we were to, I'd like to use this exhibit 1A again. If we might approach, we'd like to have Mr. White explain some of the attributes of this property. Now, Mr. White, when you were out at the residence, were you able to observe any construction that's taken place on Lot 2?
I was able to see that there was, the foundation had been constructed and some retaining walls had been built, but when I was out there, there was no ongoing or current construction activity.
And when you were out there, were you on the Friedman property?
Yes.
And could you tell the board whether or not, in your opinion, the structure you saw, the building you saw being built, was approximately within 20 feet of the lot line?
I would say that it was very close to the setback line of 20 feet, yes, somewhere right in this area.
And while I have you up here, just for ease, this is very difficult for me to read, and I've read it a number of times, could you mark on there the property line that's separating the Balala's property from the Friedman's property? Now, there is a dimension on here, or let me ask it this way, can you point out to the board the first location where the Balala property, going from east to west, is at least 170 feet wide?
It appears in this area here, you have a 52.6 dimension and then a 128.16 dimension, so that would be somewhere in this area.
Okay, that's going from west to east, or from...
Well, from east to west, it would be somewhere over in here for the full, for 150 feet would be this, somewhere in this area.
And 170 feet would be even further to the west?
Correct, somewhere over here.
And the dimension that's shown here is what, is that 117.38 feet?
117.38 or 117.30, it's kind of hard to tell.
And in your capacity as a, as a professional engineer dealing with site planning, do you get involved in determinations of setback requirements?
Generally, that's a, a land surveyor will prepare a document such as this. We can check things, but my expertise is more site design, and this kind of a document would be handled by a land surveyor.
Okay, so this is, the fixing of all these dimensions is more of a land surveyor's responsibility, is that right?
That is correct.
There is shown on this drawing, and I'll have you mark it in green if you would, I believe there, well, you tell me, is there a regulatory floodway that runs through this property?
Yes, the, the surveyor has shown it, there are also, there are also maps that are available through Lake County where this floodplain limit, floodway limit can be depicted, also shown here.
All right, would you mark it with a green? Now, the part that's on the property, what part is in the floodway? If you, if you could point that out and mark it, say with this angle stripes, that would So all the area that's within the stripes is part of the floodway?
Yes, I would agree with that.
If you want to come back to the podium, I'll ask you some additional questions. Now, you were given an opportunity to review the documents that were filed with our appeal in this case, is that right?
That is correct.
And among those documents, there were documents that had been filed with the Lake County Storm Water Management Committee Commission, is that correct?
Yes, they filled out a watershed development permit.
Okay.
If you would look at what's up on the screen, which the number is, as Exhibit 8, can you define that document?
That is a watershed development permit.
And if you turn to the next page of this document, you can bring it up and be marked There's reference to...
Can I ask you please to pick up the microphone for our video? Thank you.
It says final approval for plans entitled and dated, and there's a reference to particular plans, is that right?
Yes.
And if we look at tab 7, and you've had a chance to look at tab 7, is that right?
Yes, I have.
Is that the approved plan that's been approved by the Lake County Water, Storm Water Management Commission?
I believe that plan is the plan that is referenced in the permit application, yes.
And if you go back to number 8, you go down to the bottom, first page. Let me ask it this way, do you have any involvement with the Lake County Storm Water Management Commission?
Yes, I complete these permits quite often.
Okay. And you have an understanding that if you're going to do something different than what's been permitted, you have to apply for a change?
I will, would always follow that protocol, yes.
Now, the, the particular plan that we've looked at here, which is number 10, you've had a chance to compare number, what we've got up there is our exhibit 10, to the prior plan, which was exhibit 7, is that right?
I have seen both documents, yes.
And do they differ?
They do, yes.
And can you explain to the board how they differ?
On the previous plan, the compensatory storage areas are shown south of the proposed residence in two specific areas on either side of the existing storm sewer. Right in here, here's our storm sewer, and then another compensatory storage area down below.
Now, when you say storm sewer, that's a, that's something that's buried in the ground?
Yeah, yes, there's an existing storm sewer, 12-inch storm sewer that runs in the, across the back of the property.
And if you go to exhibit 10, can you point out where the proposed compensatory storage areas are?
There's one here on the east side of the drive, there's one here on the west side of the drive, and then there's a larger area that comes down something like this.
All right. And as a professional engineer who works with the Lake County Storm Water Management Commission, do you have any problem with what's being proposed and shown there on exhibit 10?
I would not propose, personally, I would not propose any compensatory storage within a floodway, and that's specific to the Illinois Floodplain Desk Reference, Illinois Floodplain Management Desk Reference, and they discuss appropriate uses. It states in here that regrading or modifications of the floodway for the convenience of site design for a private development is not considered an appropriate use, and this, in my opinion, is a private development, and compensatory storage is shown within the floodway.
Also, is there a principle in the concept of compensatory dam, uh, storage areas that they should be in the same area that, where the development is causing the need for compensatory storage? I've not said that very well, do you want me to rephrase it?
Could you please?
The construction that's causing the need for the compensatory storage area, in what part of the development of this land is that line?
The footprint of the residence is being elevated approximately, slightly over three feet, maybe closer to four feet, and this area in here is what is requiring the compensatory storage in these other areas. So there's fill in the footprint, and this area is elevated, resulting in a need for cut. So there's fill in the footprint, and this area is elevated, resulting in a need for cut in these areas.
And in that area where the residence is located, that's the floodplain, is it not?
That is correct.
And is there a principle in providing compensatory storage areas that if you cause the need for the storage in the floodplain, then the compensatory storage needs to be in the floodplain?
Based off of the floodway not being an appropriate use for compensatory storage for private development, the compensatory storage would have to be provided in the floodplain and not the floodway.
And obviously, that's not being done here.
That is correct, there's portions of compensatory storage in the floodplain, and there is also some shown in the floodway.
And if you were to, well, can you give us your view as to what portion of that larger area that's in the floodway? If you, what percent of that compensatory storage area is in the floodway?
It appears, I would say it's probably about 60%. It's hard to, I would say area, it might, the volume calculation might not equal the same, but this is the area that's out of the floodway, and this is the area that's in the floodway.
Well, in any event, to, to get it, to get this compensatory storage area within the floodplain and out of the floodway, it would have to be redesigned, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Now, Mr., I'm sorry, the Firm of Manhart, are you familiar with them?
Yes, I am.
They did a calculation to determine the amount of compensatory storage area, did they not?
Yes, they did.
And I've- Number 5, tab number 5. This is our exhibit number 5, have you had a chance to review these calculations?
Yes, I have.
The the area that we were just talking about, if you go to the next page, please, yeah, no, okay. This is the portion where it calculates the compensatory storage calculations, is that right?
Yes, that is for the areas on either side of the driveway.
And if you go down that page, so those total, you add those two together to get the total for those two next to the driveway, right?
Yes, that's a pretty standard volume calculation for engineers.
Now, if you go to the other, so that would be approximately 14,000 cubic feet, is that be right?
Yes, 14,810, it appears to be.
Got it down at the bottom. If you go to the next page, this, is this a calculation for that larger area that we were talking about that's both in the floodway and the floodplain?
It appears to be so, yes.
And that's approximately 30,000 cubic feet?
That is correct.
And that's, that's the part that has to be redone and taken out of the floodway, in your opinion?
If you follow the Illinois Floodplain Management Desk Reference, yes, portion of that area has to be removed from the floodway.
Now, counsel referred to the isolated wetlands. The calculations that we've talked about here, do they have anything to do with the wetlands?
No, they don't.
That's an entirely different issue, and the Valalas apparently made some arrangement for compensation for that.
Yes.
And you understand we're not challenging that compensation?
I do, yes.
One minute, please. At this time, I have no further questions for Mr. White, thank you.
Excuse me, counsel, could you get the watershed development permit application up on the screen? I'm having to show you, Mr. White, what we marked as Exhibit 9. That appears to be a watershed development application.
Just a reminder to please use the microphone.
Let me just give each one of you a copy. If I have enough here.
Thank you.
There's two there. This also appears to be watershed development permit application, doesn't it?
This is a watershed development permit application, yes.
And it appears to be different than the one that you've shown us earlier, is that the case?
Yeah, this one is different, this one has more information on it.
And this is a, this one's a newer one, isn't it? It's dated, I see down at the bottom, December 9, 2011, correct?
Yes.
Have you reviewed this?
I have not seen this prior to today.
And on the second page, we could turn to the second page of these doc, this document, and also the second page of the exhibit that you provided to us. Counsel, could we get the second page? I note that if you'll take a look at our, the second page, that also appears to be different, doesn't it?
Yes.
And the second page of our exhibit, or the Valalas Exhibit 9, makes reference to 27 Onswensia Road by Reed Engineering LLC, revision date 8/9/11. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Have you reviewed the revision date, 8/9/11?
I have not seen a full set of these site plans, no.
By the way, are you a, are you a certified floodplain manager?
I am a designated erosion control inspector, I'm not a certified floodplain manager.
And what previous floodplain, floodway experience do you have?
I've designed between 15 and 20 homes that have required compensatory storage all along the North Shore, including Winnetka and Lincolnshire.
Did you do the engineering on those?
On this plan?
Did you do the engineering on those plans?
Yes.
Okay, and are you familiar with, bear with me for one second, I have to find the statutory section. You made reference earlier to a desk, desk reference. Can you tell me what that desk reference is?
It's called the Illinois Floodplain Management Desk Reference.
And is that the law, or is that a, just a reference for engineers?
Well, there are laws that are included in it, I don't know what you're asking me exactly. This, the entire document isn't a single law. There are design criterias that are included. Are you familiar with 17 Illinois Administrative Code, Section 3708? Not off the top of my head.
Would you agree or disagree with the following statement? "To receive a permit for work in a regulatory floodway, the proposed construction shall meet two criteria. One, the proposed construction shall be in appropriate use of the regulatory floodway as defined in subsection C, and two, the proposed construction shall not reduce the regulatory floodway storage or conveyance and shall not increase regulatory floodway velocities." Would you agree with that?
If that's what the statute states, I would agree.
Have you ever heard that before?
Yes, I have.
Have you ever, do you agree with this? "The appropriate uses of the regulatory floodway that will be considered for permit issuance consist of construction modification, repair, or replacement of regulatory floodway regrading without fill to create a positive slope towards the water course."
I agree with that, yes.
And this design creates a positive slope towards the water course, doesn't it?
It depends on what you think the water course is. If the water course is the Skokie ditch, I believe there's a berm that comes up and then down, so there would not be a gradual slope to the Skokie ditch. There's a berm up and then berm down.
Can a drain, pipe, or outfall create a positive slope?
If it's, can a drained pipe create a positive slope? Well, I think we're talking about two different things.
Is there a pipe outfall in this design?
Yes.
Does it create a positive slope?
I think, again, you're asking two thing, two different, you're asking me to comment on two different items. If there's an outfall pipe and it drains to the ditch, and it is pitched properly with proper, and it, water runs downhill, as we know, if it is designed as such, then yes, that would be an, a way to allow the compensatory storage to flow freely to the drainage ditch.
This project has an outfall, doesn't it?
There is a basin that releases to the Skokie drainage ditch.
Did you check the engineering drawings to see if that has a proper positive slope?
It appears that it does, yes.
That's all I have for this witness. I may have a few redirect. Mr. White, on the last question, I think counsel asked you about the slope of a pipe. Is the slope of the pipe same as a positive grading of land?
No, they're two different things.
And in your opinion, the plat, the plan that we were looking at up here, does that have a positive grading toward the Skokie ditch?
No, it's, it appears that there's a depressional area that was created that drains to an inlet, and then from there, a storm sewer pipe carries that water to the Skokie drainage ditch.
I'd like to show you what I, we've marked as Exhibit 15. I have copies for them. Mr. White, the document we have in front of you is taken from a larger document, watershed development permits. Do you see that?
Yes.
And if you look at 3A, does this define what are appropriate uses?
Yes, it does.
And it says, "Only the construction modification, repair, or replacement of the following appropriate uses will be allowed in the regulatory floodway," have I read that correctly?
Yes, you have.
If we go right to number 1, it says, "Public flood control projects and private improvements relating to the control of drainage flooding of existing buildings. Erosion, water quality, or habitat for fish and wildlife," have I read that correctly?
Yes.
In your opinion, is the design that's being proposed in this case involving the drainage and flooding of an existing building?
No.
In fact, it's for a new building, right?
Yes.
And while we're on regulatory matters, I'd like to have you look at what I've marked as Exhibit 16. If you look at what we've marked as Exhibit 16, this, this is from 17 Illinois Administrative Code that counsel was referring to, recognize that?
Yes.
And it says at the bottom, no, it's italicized, "No unit of local government, including home rule units, may issue a building permit or other apparent authorization of any prohibited new construction within the regulatory floodway," is that right?
Yes, that's what it states.
Now, the document you were given by counsel that's dated, that was the permit?
Yes.
That's dated approximately, I don't know if you had a chance to look at our appeal, which was filed on December 2nd, that was filed a week after we filed an appeal in this case, is that right?
It appears to be the case, yes, this is dated 12/9/11.
So when the building permit that was issued, that was never, that permit wouldn't have been in the hands of the city to make any determination when they issued the permit, is that right?
That is correct, this was issued seven days after your appeal. So whenever the plan approval was granted by the City of Lake Forest, this document happened after. Happened, this document was completed after building approval, or a building permit was issued.
I have no further questions, Mr. White.
Please proceed.
Will you look at Exhibit number 15, please? Under 3A, which is appropriate uses in a regulatory floodway, will you read number 3?
It says, "Storm and sanitary sewer outfalls."
And that's an appropriate use, correct?
Yes, "Construction modification, repair, or replacement of the following appropriate uses, storm and sanitary sewer outfalls."
Thank you. That's all I hear. At this time, I'd call Kerry Friedman as a witness.
And we'll ask that Ms. Friedman be sworn in.
Do you wish to testify in the testimony about keeping this proceeding until the truth of the matter is revealed?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Friedman, would you please state your full name and spell your last name for the record?
My name is Kerry Colleen Friedman, and my last name is spelled F-R-I-E-D-M-A-N.
You're gonna have to speak up on, I know you're soft-spoken, but get this on the table.
My name is Kerry Colleen Friedman, and my last name is spelled F-R-I-E-D-M-A-N.
And you're the owner of the property at 51 West Onwensia, is that correct?
Yes.
And when did you acquire that property?
1988.
And at the time you acquired the property, what was the condition of the prop, the lot behind your lot?
It was completely wooded.
And...
Well, that's not true. There was a section where there was wildflowers in wetland.
All right. And have you lived there continuously since 1988?
Yes.
Have you had the opportunity to observe what happens to Lot, well, I'm gonna call it Lot 2, which is 27 West Onwensia, at various times of the year when we have heavy rains or falls?
Yes.
Can you tell the board what's the effect of what happens to Lot 2?
Well, it basically becomes a solid mass of water. It actually has gotten the nickname "Lake Won't Be Gone" in my household because it is there for so many months of the year. And it has gotten deeper and wider as the years have gone on.
Now, the, you've had an opportunity to watch the work that's being, taking place on Lot 2, is that right?
Yes.
And for the board, can you describe how your house is configured at the back side of the house?
My home is primarily glass, and my kitchen juts out further than the rest of the house in the back. It is all glass.
And your kitchen faces to the south of Lot 2?
Yes.
And can you observe the construction that's going on on Lot 2?
Yes.
What impact, if any, does that, the closeness of that construction that's been described as being approximately 20 feet from the lot line, have on you and your property?
Well, I can only estimate that the value of my home has been greatly diminished, and I would have no way of knowing for sure by how much. But it was basically designed as a glass house in the woods, and there is now no privacy for the entire, actually, east side or south side of the house.
And this house is going to be approximately 35 feet above the existing grade. You're aware of that fact?
Yes.
What impact is that going to have on air and light as it affects your property?
Well, I have a water garden with lilies that bloom that will no longer bloom because they require full light to actually bloom.
And you've observed this property, the building that's going up is within, is approximately 20 feet from your lot line, is that right?
The building is, and the retaining walls are closer.
Right, there are retaining walls closer to your property than the house itself.
Than 20 feet, yeah.
Now, in the past, your property has drained onto what we're referring to as Lot 2 or 27 Onwensia?
Yeah, pretty much all of Onwensia from Green Bay Road down drains onto 27 West.
And the, part of the construction here are some retaining walls that, in your view, will impede the flow of that water?
I'm sorry, some, can you say?
Retaining walls that will impede the flowing of that water?
I don't see how they could not. They're solid, and they're poured cement, so they're gonna be impervious.
Okay. Prior to, rephrase that, were you ever given any opinion as to whether or not Lot 2 was buildable?
I was informed by black engineering about 10 or 12 years ago that the compensatory storage numbers could never come out correct, and I was informed by an architect that was working for me at the time that the lot was completely unbuildable because he had received that information from the city.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions right now, but I'm sure counsel will have some questions for you. Thanks.
Good evening, Ms. Friedman. Do you have any training as an engineer?
Oh, of course not, no.
And you don't have any training in fluid dynamics or water flow, anything like that, correct?
No.
And when you purchased this property, you knew there was another lot immediately to the south of your lot, didn't you?
Yeah, they actually tried to sell it to me at the same time.
Was that Mr. Datus that tried to sell it to you?
I assume so. It's a long time ago, and I really don't remember.
Okay. Now, you've put a sprinkler system on the Bilala property, haven't you?
I have, and built a fence and built a vegetable garden.
So, you've, you've put a sprinkler system, a vegetable garden, and a fence all on the Bilala property, correct?
Yes.
And their development will interfere with your fence, your ability to garden, and your sprinkler system?
It's all gone, so it won't interfere. It's already just not there anymore.
But you wanted the right to use the Bilala property, correct?
Well, you know, I've been afforded the right, the Bilalas have been extremely gracious over the years, and my husband requested the right to use the property for storage and was told that that would be fine. The vegetable garden was built for me as a gift by someone who, who did not know that it wasn't all, it's half on the Bilala property. So, that was news to me, too, because I really hadn't been paying attention to the plat. I was grateful for the vegetable garden, though.
Thank you.
Just have a few questions. The Bilalas knew, as you said, you got permission to do these things that you testified about.
Well, I don't, I don't recall getting permission to build the fence. My husband got permission to store his racing equipment and his boating equipment, which interfered greatly with my garden work that I had been attempting to do over the years. So, after planting grass and not obscuring the amount of stuff, I then built a fence that was long enough to actually keep it out of sight.
And the Bilalas were aware that the fence had been built, is that right?
Well, I have to assume so. They were back and forth on the property over the years.
And, and you maintained the property, you had the Bilalas property mowed for those sections where there was grass, is that right?
Yeah, I, I've been landscaping that property for 24 years.
And you never sent a bill to the Bilalas, did you?
No, it just, when I moved in, it was landscaped, and it just didn't, never even occurred to me to not landscape it because it all flowed together.
All right. And again, the Bilalas were aware of the work you were doing on their property?
I have to assume so. I don't know for a fact.
I have nothing further. Thank you. Nothing more from me. Madam Chairman, we have a number of exhibits that haven't been shown to any witness. I've talked to counsel about them, and I believe in terms of authenticity, there's an objection to them, and I'll be using them in our closing argument. And we'll have them marked and made part of the record. There's no objection.
I don't have an objection.
And with that, we will, that finishes the case of the applicant.
Is there any rebuttal evidence by petitioner? You, you've completed your presentation.
I have, thank you.
Will there be a closing statement by the petitioner?
I'm gathering that perhaps counsel, the Bilalas would like to present more evidence.
I would, I would ask the board of commissioners to introduce several witnesses.
Please proceed.
Yes, I'd like to start with Glenn Christensen, please.
Madam Chairman, just so we're not interrupting the proceedings, we have just had a standing objection to their presentation of witnesses, as I said at the beginning. Thank you.
That's noted in the record.
So, do you wish to testify in the testimony about keeping this proceeding until the truth of the matter is revealed?
I do.
Thanks.
Will you state your name for the board, please?
My name is Glenn Christensen.
Mr. Christensen, can you briefly tell the board about your professional qualifications?
I am a land planner and landscape architect with Manhart Consulting. Educated at University of Illinois, graduate in 1974 with a BLA in landscape architecture. Worked for the city of Waukegan for four years. Worked for a firm called Associated Planners out of Northbrook for five years. Worked for Alan Krakauer and Associates for approximately a year and a half, 1984. I opened my own firm, Christensen and Associates. Had my own firm till 2004, when Manhart Consulting acquired my firm. So, that's approximately about 38 years I've been practicing. I'm a licensed landscape architect in the states of Illinois and Wisconsin.
Are you familiar with the project on the Bilala property?
Yes, I am.
And what's your involvement with the project?
A couple of things. I started out working with the design team... I started out working with the design team to develop a site plan and land plan for the property. I'm also working with the landscape architecture on the property. Hired consultants to do the tree survey on the site and generally worked with the entitlement and approval of the plans that were done for this property.
Now, I want to talk about the lot area. Are you familiar with the minimum lot area for the Bilalas project?
Yes, I am.
And can you tell me what that is?
Well, it's zoned R4. Normal lots would have to have a minimum area of 60,000 square feet. This happens to be a lot in depth. Lot in depths in the R4 district are required to have 66,000 square feet total.
All right. Why don't we approach, if we can, the board? And again, we're looking into plat, and I'm going to mark the plat as Exhibit One here. Can you tell the board how many feet, square feet, Lot Two has overall?
Overall, Lot Two has 81,986 square feet.
And then can you show the board the access area?
The access area would be the flag portion of what we call on a flag lot would be the 45-foot width by approximately, is it 285? That would be the access area.
And if you subtract that access area from the overall area of Lot Two, are you still above 66,000 square feet?
Yes, you are. You're in the 69,000 square foot range, yes.
Are you also familiar with the setback requirements?
Yes, I am. The setback requirements for lots in depth require a 50-foot setback from all lot lines, unless there's a provision in the zoning ordinance, unless the plat of subdivision says otherwise. And obviously, this is a plat of subdivision that was done in 1981 and has other setback lines indicated.
And that setback line here is 20 feet, correct?
That's correct.
All right, let's go back to the podium. Now, when you were dealing with the setback and the lot size requirements, have you conferred with staff from the city of Lake Forest?
Yes, we did.
And, for example, who have you met with?
We met with Kathy Zerniak, Megan O'Neil, some of the engineering staff.
Were lot, was lot area or setbacks ever an issue?
No, it was not.
All right. And the proposed structures, are they going to be behind the setback line shown on the plat?
Yes, they are.
And was the plat approved by the Lake Forest Plan Commission on December 15, 1980?
As it says on the plat, yes.
And the plat was approved by the Lake Forest City Council on January 5, 1980, correct?
1981, yes.
And the section that you were talking about, yard requirements, that's section of the zoning ordinance, 46-8 subsection D, correct?
Correct.
Now, there was some testimony by Mrs. Friedman about fences that are going to be on this property impeding the water flow. Can you address that issue with the board, please?
Yes, we have proposed, as part of the building plans and landscape plans, to have a seven-foot solid wood fence run along the property line, basically behind the Friedman home, starting at the west at the floodway line and following the property line east, and then taking the angle line and going back to the wooded section along the drive. And this is a wooden fence that seven foot is the maximum height in the city of Lake Forest. And that fence will also have some openings underneath that will allow water flow to go underneath. It will not impede the water flow.
Thank you. That's all I have for this witness.
Sure.
Mr. Christensen, you were referring to the zoning code, and I think the show board, the particular area, I'm going to use, I always call it an Elmo, but I guess it's called something else. It's a little difficult to read, but you recognize this as a section, you recognize this as a section from the lot in depth. I'll give you the number. It's 46-8.
That's correct, yes.
And then this is subsection B at the top.
Applicability.
Sorry, would you please read the relevant portion because we can't read it?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Thank you.
It says applicability, the regulations contained in this section are applicable only to lot in-depth subdivisions approved after May 7, 1979. Correct so far?
Correct.
And it goes on to say, except for the provisions of section 46-8 per N.D., closed per N., yard requirements, closed per N., which shall apply to all lots of record unless otherwise designated on the plat of subdivision. Right?
That's correct.
Okay. And if you look at the yard requirements in D down below, they pertain to access areas where the, there's an easement that provides the access. Isn't that right? I'll just read it.
Yeah.
For a lot in depth, the minimum front yard setbacks for the zoning district in which the property is located shall be required from all property lines and from the edge of any contiguous access area abutting the lot as measured from the easement line of said access area. Is that right?
That's what that section says, yes.
Okay. And the next one says, for a front lot, which really says imply to us, because this is not the front lot, right? So we're really just talking about the one I read. And this is not an easement access. Is that right? This is a fee ownership access. Is that right?
That's part of the lot, yes.
Okay. So what we're talking about in this case has nothing to do with an easement. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we look at, also while we're on this page, if we look up at C, it gives the zoning minimum lot and minimum lot width.
Correct.
And in R4, the minimum, this is for a lot in depth, the minimum area, lot area, 66,000 square feet, correct?
Correct.
And the minimum lot width is 170 feet.
Correct.
Okay?
At the building setback line, yes.
Well, it doesn't say that, does it?
Yes, it does.
Okay, at the, at the front building setback line. Okay, so this lot has to meet 170 feet at the building setback line.
Correct.
Okay? Can you, if you come up to your, well, we can use this one, if you don't mind. Can you point out to the board, you can hold this, Michael? Can you point out to the board where the minimum lot width for Lot Two is first met?
At the building setback line.
Okay. So from that up, the minimum lot is not met.
That's correct.
It's really met at this point, is it not, that I'm pointing to, which is the property line, is the first time the lot is at least 170 feet wide?
Yeah, I think you can add up those numbers if you consider that as 150 plus what, 187, so it's-
That's what that says.
Yeah.
Okay. So this, you described as an access area because it wasn't 170 feet wide, is that right?
Well, I did-
This is an access area because it's a lot in depth.
Well, let's, let's assume that the lot in depth has 170 feet of frontage, let's say 150 feet of frontage on on Wensia that comes down to this point, which is what I'm calling the north lot line of Lot Two. 150 feet wide comes down. Wouldn't that entire 150 feet be part of the access area?
Not necessarily, because then that width would be close to be part of the lot. You'd get a much larger lot to calculate out in your building book then. The reason for the narrow flag lot is to get access to the rear lot, and that was really the only way you could subdivide this lot.
Well, my point of it is that when you have something less-
To what his point is now-
Let me, the question, I'm sorry. I draw the question. What I was wanting to ask you, though, is at 150 feet, you could have access area that's 150 feet wide that comes down to this point, which is where the lot line, north lot line meets down at this point down in here. Is that be correct?
Well, I guess you could, but I don't see anybody that would gain by doing that at all. It just, it wouldn't make any sense.
Well, my question is, in my example, 150 feet coming down, that entire 150 feet width would be the access area, correct?
You know, again, I'm going to object, it's not what the case is here. You're just posing hypothetical that doesn't exist. Well, I submit that it shows the error of their argument. That's why I don't want this to be presented. The air getting closing. But my question stands.
If you had 150-foot wide flag pole coming down, that entire 150 feet would be access area. Isn't that correct?
Again, it's, it just, it's not a, I don't think it's a reasonable question because I don't see anybody doing 150-foot wide flag lot. It just doesn't make any sense.
Well, let's assume they're unreasonable, and they do 150-foot wide lot, wide access, that would be the access area. Is that correct?
Well, a portion of it would probably be an access area because you'd need a driveway to get through there.
And in fact, you wouldn't get to the front lot line until you got to an area where you can have 170 feet wide area. Wouldn't that be correct?
It would be the building setback line. It's not the front yard setback line.
All right. A couple more questions, we can go back to you. Mr. Christensen, I thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Mr. Quinn, do you have any questions?
No more questions.
I do.
Will you state your name for the, will you state your name for the record, please?
Bud Reed.
And Mr. Reed, can you tell the board about your profession and your professional qualifications?
I hold a bachelor's science degree from Southern Illinois University, graduate in 1971. I practiced professional engineering for over 40 years. I hold a license in the state of Illinois for engineering and a license for land surveying.
Are you familiar with the project on the Bilalas property?
Yes, I am.
And what has been your involvement on that project?
Been the principal design engineer on the project.
All right. Is there a regulatory floodway on the Bilalas property?
Yes, there is.
Let's, yeah. All right, let's approach the board if we could. First of all, can you show this to the board and explain to them what this is?
This is a portion- This is a portion of the engineering plans that were submitted to Lake Forest for approval. I'm not sure what page this particular engineering exhibit is. Appears to be the utility plan. This plan shows the contours on the property, the footprint of the home, regulatory floodway, the base flood elevation or 100-year floodplain is outlined in pink or red. The floodway is outlined in green, and the compensatory storage areas are shown in blue.
Now, just, so I'm clear, there's something that's called a floodplain, right?
Yes.
And what's that?
The floodplain is the outer limits of the, where water is expected to flow to. If you have water backing up in a 100-year storm, you can expect the water to extend to this pink line here.
And every floodplain has a floodway, is that correct?
Yes, it does. The floodway here is marked in green. It's adjacent to the Skokie Drainage Ditch. It's generally where water actually flows. The area in between, which I believe is the next question, I'm sorry, is a flood fringe, and that's actually where water starts to back up. There's no flowage in this area.
Now, does the plan for the Bilalas property call for adding any fill in the floodway?
No.
Does it, the plan call for a grading in the floodway?
Yes, it does.
And does that grading create a positive slope towards the water course?
Yes, it does.
And the appeal that was filed by the Freedmans mentions administrative code, section 3708. Has the state delegated its authority over that section?
Yes, it has. The state's delegated that to Lake County Stormwater Management, and then Lake County Stormwater Management's delegated that to Lake Forest.
I'm going to show you what I've marked as Exhibit Number Seven, and I'll also tender copies of this to the board. and I'll also tender copies of this to the board. Can you identify this for the, uh, for the board, please?
Thank you.
This is a letter dated May 6, 2011 to the City of Lake Forest from Lake County SMC regarding, um, some information I believe that Lake Forest had submitted to them for review.
And what was the purpose of... What was the purpose of this letter?
I believe the purpose of this letter was to ask Lake County Stormwater Management to review the, uh, plans for the Balala property.
Does the, uh, Lake County Stormwater Management, um, commission, approve, uh, plans for compensatory stor- compensatory storage in Lake Forest?
No, they do not. That's the responsibility of Lake Forest, their certified community, as stated in this letter.
And that was...
And that set forth in the letter, correct?
Correct.
Now, has compensatory storage been provided for in the design?
Yes, it has.
And what governmental agency was responsible for approving, uh, the compensatory storage?
Lake Forest approved the compensatory storage calculations. Uh, we actually prepared all the information for them. I do believe that was ran through IDNR before it was approved by Lake Forest.
Just so I'm clear on the record, that the wetlands issues has been withdrawn from the appeal?
I said the compensatory doesn't need to be...
Well, there were...
May I be pardoned?
Sorry, there were wetlands mentioned in the appeal, and I just want to make sure that they're not a part of the presentation by the petitioner, so I don't have to address them. We're only addressing the compensatory storage area. All right, next, let's look at... Let's look at Exhibit Number 9. And I, I think I tendered Exhibit Number 9 to the committee, uh, before. Can you identify this document for the, for the, uh, board?
This is a fully executed watershed development permit from the City of Lake Forest.
Now, uh, one of the things that was mentioned was the date of, uh, this application is December 9, 2011, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, if you look at the second page of that document, it refers to, uh, 27 Onswensia Road by Reed Engineering, revision dated August 9, 2011. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's before the building permit was issued?
That's correct.
And Exhibit Number 6, that we looked at before, is that those plan... Is that the plans that were approved in that permit application?
That's correct.
And that shows the present compensatory storage that we're using in this project, correct?
That's correct.
Right, they've, they've also alleged in their appeal that this project is not in compliance with the Army Corps of Engineers' permit discussed in the Army Corps of Engineers' Letter of August 2, 2011, due to material changes in the proposed construction. Do you agree with that?
No, the project is in full compliance with the Army Corps of Engineers' permit.
And can you tell the board why that is?
Well, the permit's very specific, it only affects the outfall of the pipe, has nothing to do... Outfall of the pipe. So, the very end of the pipe is all this permit is affecting for, and they did approve that.
Is that pipe, that outfall pipe, shown on Exhibit Number 6?
Yes, it is.
Would you take a minute and show the board where that's shown?
The pipe is shown, the pipe outfall is shown at this location.
Very good.
Sorry, can I see a little?
It's connected to the other pipe system.
So, there are no other outlets anywhere else on the property?
There's one other outfall on the property, but it's not connected to this property. It was, existed prior to 1981 in the division. It continues back to the east, and that's this pipe here. And it's still intact on the property.
Okay.
Right. In fact, that other pipe is shown on the platte subdivision, correct?
That's correct.
Right, um, Mr. Reed, I also want to direct your attention to, um, what had been previously marked by the petitioner as Exhibit Number 15, which has to do with water, uh, watershed development permits and appropriate uses. Can you explain or comment onto that to the board?
Yes, as part of any, any work within the regulatory floodway, there's specific appropriate uses that can be accommodated within the floodway. Those are outlined on this particular exhibit. The two which we followed are 3A3, which is storm sewer outfalls, and then Number 9, which is regulatory floodway regrading.
What's the last one?
Item 9, regulatory floodway regrading.
Regrading, okay.
And do you have an opinion as to whether this project falls within those two categories?
Yes, it does.
Then I'd like to show you what the petitioner put in as Exhibit Number 16, which has to do with the, uh, Illinois Administrative Code, delegation to municipal, municipalities and counties, do you see that?
Yes, I do.
And do you care to comment on that for the board, please?
Well, again, these are specific items that are actually delegated from IDNR, from Illinois Administrative Code to IDNR. It's delegated then to SMC, which is delegated then to Lake Forest. And this has the same requirements in it as does Exhibit 15.
Now, um, during the, uh, during this process, was, uh... The Balala team, for lack of a better word, in contact with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources? If you know?
We were in contact with the Illinois Division of Natural Resources, yes. Also, the Army Corps of Engineers, and of course, Lake Forest, and also SMC. So, we, we did contact all the appropriate agencies. We do have tentative approval. The only right, the sign-off we have, though, is from Lake Forest, who's the delegated authority.
Finally, I just want to talk about compensatory storage. Is fill being added anywhere on this property? Or is, is there an overall... I'm sorry, strike that question. Is there an overall addition or subtraction of material on this property?
There's a total decrease in, in fill on this property. Actually, fill's being carried, carted off of the property. There's, um, approximately 20% additional compensatory storage that's required as part of the ordinance. And in addition to that 20%, there's probably another 20% to 25% that we provided. So, there's approximately 40% to 45% additional storage available on this property than what existed prior to any work.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Quinn, then you, uh, do you have any other witnesses?
Uh, I would just likely, just briefly want to call a couple of members and stand when I'm finished with, uh, with the testimony. But I don't anticipate that anyone will think more than two minutes.
Okay.
I think you have Exhibit Number 6, don't you, here? Or did we pick that up?
You should have. Uh, Mr. Reed, um, as you know by now, my name's Leonard Shufflet, and I represent Kerry Friedman, who's been sitting here throughout the proceedings. If you, uh, look at your Exhibit Number 6, there are numerous lines, and maybe if we came over here again, I'm sorry to drag you around, but if you come over here, we can have the board follow along. The, there's this line here, is that a, what's the, the elevation of this? Call it crooked line. It's coming across here.
Appears to be 656.
I'm sorry, appears to be...
656. Elevation 656.
And, may, you're creating a series of step downs in the floodway, is that right?
Step downs, meaning we are excavating in the floodway, yes.
You're coming down, and... Your, this is meant to be a retention area, is it not?
It's a compensatory storage area. It's a difference.
And in this case, you are... Can you tell us what the lowest level is in that compensatory storage area?
Pardon my eyesight, I believe it's 653, 663? I can't really tell, I probably need a blow-up. 653, I'm going to guess. About three feet.
All right, and that water has, or that area, has this outflow pipe out to the Skokie, um, ditch, is that right?
Correct.
And that outflow pipe carries the water out because it's lower than the area around it, is that right?
Correct.
And, so you have done grading, but... Let me rephrase that, draw it. Prior to you doing any grading, the... The area that was 656 went down to a lesser, went down to 655, is that right?
No, that's in the channel there. You're starting to get into the channel of the drainage, well...
Okay, I'm just following the line around. The line was at 656, and then it comes around to the channel, and it goes down to 655 in the channel, is that right?
It actually goes down much deeper than that.
Well, we're really not in the channel, we're in that 50-foot setback, right?
We're in the floodway.
Yes. My point is, the natural drainage, before you did any grading, was from where the Balala residence is going to be built, down to the Skokie Drainage Ditch, right?
We regraded a depressional area that was on the property in conformance with the administrative codes and the ordinances.
Why don't you answer my question, which is, before you did any grading, the natural drainage was from the Balala residence down to the Skokie Drainage Ditch, right?
Water stood on the property previously, and it seeped through the sandy soil to the Skokie Drainage Ditch.
And it went from 650... Let me ask you this, it went from 656 down to 655, which is a foot drop. Is that not correct?
No, it's not correct. It actually dropped much farther than that, because the Skokie Drainage Ditch is probably eight to 10-foot deep, so it probably dropped at least that far.
Well, I'm not talking about in the di- in the ditch itself, I'm just talking about on the property.
Well, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Uh, then, why don't you listen to this question? And if this drained from this low point, you wouldn't need a drainage pipe, would you?
The drainage pipe was put in to improve drainage on the entire area, as well as the upstream area, and clear this property of the water that was standing on it that created a lot of nuisance.
All right. Now, let me ask you about, um... The grading that you did is more or less parallel to the Skokie Ditch, is that right?
No, I would say it's perpendicular to the ditch.
Well, that would be this grading over here, correct?
No, that would be this grading here, perpendicular to the ditch. This grading is perpendicular to this ditch.
Could we see the map, please?
I'm sorry. In this area? And the area that's down here...
To the bottom, that's graded in a way that's parallel to the Skokie Ditch, is that right?
The contours on the Balala property run parallel to the contours that are on the Skokie Ditch, yes.
Looking at what was marked as, uh, like I said, Balala Exhibit 9, uh, can you tell me who signed this as the enforcement officer?
It appears to be Ramish, your village engineer and surveyor. Ramish Kana-Pala.
I'm sorry, appears to be...
Pardon me, it appears to be the village engineer, city surveyor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reed, I have no further questions.
I have no more questions for Mr. Reed, I have none. With the board's indulgence, I'd like to call, um, Ramish... With the board's indulgence, I'd like to call Ramish Canapana, please.
Chairman, board? I do.
Mr. Canapana, do I have your name right?
Perfect.
Could you tell the board what your occupation is?
I'm currently employed as a city surveyor and engineer for the city of Lake Forest.
And what are your qualifications?
I'm a registered professional engineer, I have a bachelor's in civil engineering, a master's in civil engineering, and I've been with the city for five and a half years.
And are you familiar with the Bilala project?
I'm familiar with the Bilala property.
And, did you review the plans?
I personally did not review, but my staff did review the plans.
And do you have an opinion as to whether or not these plans comply with the city ordinances and the various regulations of the state of Illinois and other bodies?
Yeah, the plans comply with, the city of Lake Forest follows the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance as referred in the letter by SMC, and the plans comply with the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance.
That's all I have. I have just a few questions, if I may. Mr. Canapana, did I say that correctly?
Canapana, yeah, you can call me Ramish, yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you. The previously, there was discussion about what is required of the watershed development permits, and we had marked as Exhibit 15, watershed development permits that related to Section 3, take a look at that, and in particular, the grading that's in place here, and if I could, we, council has left this up here, so if I may use it. This is the Bilala Exhibit 6, which I had said. We've been talking about the grading that's down in the floodway creates a positive slope away from the drainage ditch, does it not, within the area that was colored as blue? And maybe we should step up here, so you can show the board. So my question is, isn't, aren't these grades going down, so water's gonna flow this way, to, sort of toward the east, along here?
Again, in accordance with the ordinance, as the ordinance clearly says, regulatorily floodway regrading without fill to create a positive non-erosive slopes towards the channel.
I'm sorry, to create a?
I'm just reading the ordinance to, regulatorily floodway regrading without fill to create a positive non-erosive slope towards the channel. So basically, the key phrase here is without fill, and the regrading in the floodway, without fill, which is what the plan shows.
Okay. But my question goes to the direction, if you could turn it so the board can see it. These, these lines represent one-foot increments, is that right?
That is correct.
And, so the one I'm pointing to, that's closest to the blue line, that's a foot higher than the next one, is that right?
Yeah, just so the board is clear, the one they're highlighting, that's 656 contour, and the existing contour, which is towards the channel, that's 657, that means it's higher. So, if you're asking the question, positive drainage, if you look at it from this plan itself, 657 is right there, 656 goes towards the ditch, 657, 656 goes towards the, so any drainage you create, you try to create away from the creek and within the creek, so 657 contour, which is the high contour, is in the middle.
And, and so these contours that have been brought in, will be brought into existence by the contractor, is going to go down from 656, 655, 654, 653, correct?
So just, I'm again clear, this is 657, existing 656, 655 is already there, the contractor is not doing anything different in terms of slope. If you look at it, there's a 657, existing, don't look at the new ones, the existing 656 is right there, existing 655 is right there. So, existing grades are going that way, their grades are going that way.
Well, but they're going from 656, it's what the original grade was, towards the Bilala house, they're going down to 653, they're lowering the grade.
Right, in their testimony, that's what they referred, that they're providing additional comp storage, which is required by the ordinance, so if you look at it from a pure sense, there was a flat piece of land, now there's a depressed area, it is holding water, which is providing the comp storage.
So, this, this is, this, they're, they're creating a depressional area for storage of water, correct?
As permitted by the ordinance.
Okay.
By the ordinance, you have to follow the ordinance.
Right, but to do that, they have to grade in a way to create a slope away from the Skokie ditch.
Again, you're referring to, you know, you're going back to the same question, and I'm saying, if you just follow the engineering plan or any contour drawing, it shows the existing itself brings that way, the ordinance allows you to regrade, and all they're doing is they're creating that, a flat land and making a depressed land to create the comp storage.
Okay, so just so I understand, you're saying that before they did any grading, the water flowed away from the Skokie ditch, and they're continuing that work?
They, all they're doing is they're enhancing what was there before, so they're making it depressed, that's correct.
All right, thank you very much. Just so I'm clear, they're making more compensatory storage, so there'll be less flooding problems, potentially, correct?
The way, the way I look at it, or the way we have to interpret the ordinance is, does it comply with the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance to create comp storage? This does create comp storage, which is required to provide 1.2 times, and this plan provides 1.2 times comp storage for any fill in the flood plain, not in the floodway.
Thank you. I have nothing more for this witness, and for my last witness, I'd like to call Kathy Cerniak.
I do.
Ms. Cerniak, will you state your name and occupation for the record?
My name is Catherine, with a C, last name is Cerniak, spelled C as in Charles, Z as in zebra, E-R-N-I-A-K.
And, Ms. Cerniak, what is your position with the city of Lake Forest, and what are your responsibilities?
I'm the Director of Community Development for the city of Lake Forest, I've been the director since 2002. I'm responsible for overseeing the development process, both from a day-to-day perspective as well as long-range planning.
And, are you familiar with the Bilala property?
I am, yes.
And are you familiar with the development process for this property?
Yes.
And, have you been familiar, have you been involved in it since the beginning, when the Bilalas first started the project?
Very nearly, since the beginning, but I believe that engineer, our engineering, engineering staff was involved even before I was involved.
Now, just maybe one last question, or two last questions, do you have an opinion as to whether or not the Bilala project, as permitted, complies with all of the city ordinances and regulations?
We have very carefully reviewed this project, we understand there are challenges with the lots, we were pressed with many questions from the building review board, responded to many questions from the neighbors, and, again, we've reviewed this very carefully and believe that this project is in full compliance with all applicable regulations and code requirements.
Thank you, that's all I have for this witness. Ms. Cerniak, how are you this evening?
Good.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the access area and how that's calculated. Would you agree with me that this lot is required to have at least a width of 170 feet?
Yeah, 150.
Well, as a lot in depth, and I'll refer you to 46.8, this wasn't meant to be a trick question. If you look at C, Section C, it's required to have 66,000 square feet and 170 feet of
Correct.
Okay, so, anything short of 170 feet, like, less than 170 feet, is not going to meet the minimum lot width, is that right?
Correct, the lot width is measured at the front setback line.
And, the, if this lot only had, was 45 feet wide and ran the whole length, and had 66,000 square feet in it, it wouldn't qualify as an appropriate lot under R4, would that be right?
Correct.
It has to have 170 feet as measured, correct?
It has to have 170 feet width at met as measured at the front yard setback.
Okay, now, anything less than 170 feet going out to the road is part of the access area, is it not?
Not necessarily, no.
Well, I've used this example, and if you don't mind, I'll use it with you, if we could step over here to the chart. Not every flag not every flag lot or lot in depth has an access area of 45 feet, is that right?
That's correct.
I imagine you've seen them in many different widths, is that be right?
Correct.
And, in the case of, if you had one that, it doesn't have to be this lot, but if you had one that was 150 feet wide, coming back for access, the front, all that 150 feet width down to the building lot line would be part of the access, wouldn't it?
It's certainly a hypothetical, but I can't recall seeing a lot configured like that, and my guess is that if we had a lot in depth that so very closely approached the required width at the street, in fact, I believe the, the width for a non-lot in depth at the street is 150, so maybe you want to use 140.
That seems 140, thank you.
But my guess is that if a lot in depth were created with 140-foot width at the street, we would probably work with the petitioners through the subdivision process to more closely identify what portion of that was the access area.
And, but under the ordinance is written, using my hypothetical of 140 feet, all of that would be part of the access area, wouldn't that be right?
I don't believe it necessarily would, as you said, not to think just of this lot, but for instance, a cul-de-sac lot could be a similar situation, even though it's not a lot in depth. Cul-de-sac lots can have very narrow street frontage, and you may have a long neck of a cul-de-sac lot that isn't considered an access, but it's just considered the front part of that lot, and the setback line could not start on that lot until it reached the minimum width requirement. So you may in fact, rather than having a 50-foot setback, I've seen cul-de-sac lots with 75-foot front yard setbacks, so I don't know that that would necessarily hold true.
Well, that's a good example, just so that the board understands that, in a cul-de-sac lot, you don't come to the front lot line until you get at a point where the width is equal to the required front lot line, is that right?
No, the front lot line would be at the street, where it meant the right of way, the front setback line could be anywhere on the property, similar to this.
Well, but it would not be any closer than the first point that met the setback, met the minimum lot width at the setback, is that right?
It would not be any closer, but it would not necessarily have to be right at that point, setback lines can be established through a subdivision plat in any location as deemed appropriate.
Okay, but if you did not have a setback line established on the drawing, so we're looking at the code, the setback line on your cul-de-sac could be no closer than when the lot met the minimum width, I'll have to withdraw that question because I think I confused myself. The, the you, you don't, you, you don't count any of the lot on the cul-de-sac until you get to the point where you have a minimum width for that lot. Is that right?
You, you do count the whole lot, you count the whole lot from a perspective of minimum lot size, but the front, the setback line would be established at the point where it was 170 feet, or 150 feet, depending on the type of lot.
Other than this case, in your period with the city, has there been an issue of a setback line in a lot in depth case that you've worked on?
I can't speak to a specific case, but we often deal with setback lines that are established by the plat, which don't conform with the code directly.
Okay, have any of those been established after 1979, are you talking about plats after 1979?
Yes, I personally have worked on plats where we have established setbacks that are not consistent with what's in the code for various reasons, such as, in this case, in looking at the subdivision, there was an acknowledgement that a good portion of the property, as you've noted previously, was not buildable, so there was a shift in response to that.
And, that can be handled by variances, is that right?
It's handled through the subdivision process and approved as part of the plat.
Okay, was that part of the process that was involved with this plat that we have in this case?
I wasn't here in 1980 or 1981, but it is clear from reviewing the record that the limited area of buildability on this lot was discussed, and that it was a conscious decision to establish the setback as it was established.
And what are you referring to as part of the record when you say that?
I've reviewed the minutes from the plan commission discussion and from the city council discussion.
And, those are available to the public?
Yes.
And did you bring them this evening?
I don't know that they were included in the commission's packet, no, I don't, I did not bring them, they were not requested.
I have nothing else, thank you. Just a couple more, the, this project has already commenced, the foundation is in, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And, that foundation was put in, or being put in before this appeal was ever filed, correct?
Yes, work on the project progressed pretty diligently since the permit was issued on October 17th, I believe.
And, did, did you testify that the minimum, minimum lot width is established at the setback line? Building setback line?
No, the, the code requires that the minimum width of the lot needs to be met at the setback.
And is it in this case?
It is, yes.
That's all I have. Just one question, the, the, the code provides that work is supposed to stop once an appeal has been filed, is that right? filed, is that right?
I, I can't speak to that, I do know that you raised that question, and we reviewed it with our city attorney and proceeded on the advice of our city attorney.
And in fact, the work did not stop after the appeal was filed, is that right?
The city did not take any action nor felt that it was appropriate to take any action to stop the work.
And, but the point of it is, the work continued, so much of the work was done after the Bilalas were on notice of our appeals, is that right?
The work has proceeded diligently since October 17th.
Okay, which would include after this appeal was filed.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Just as the manner of consequence in here, I want to make sure that I leave copies of some of the exhibits that I would like, if I haven't given them for the committee.
And if I could have both counselors give me kind of a master set, I know they've been distributed somewhat inconsistently this evening, but so we can have one, at least, final set of exhibits that you are both submitting as part of the record, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I would like to provide to the board, and these have all been pre-marked, our Exhibit 2, which is the deed from the Datas, and I'll just pile them up for you here, which is the deed from the Datas to the Radkeys of Lot 1. Then, as Exhibit Number 3, I have a copy of the deed from the Radkeys to Mrs. Friedman. Exhibit 4 is the deed from the Datis to the Bilalas. Exhibit Number 5 is, which I think you already have, is the Bulk Scale Workbook. Number 6, which I only have one copy of in color, is the Engineering Exhibit. Exhibit 7, and I think I've handed that out, is the Stormwater Management Letter to Mr. Cana Peretti dated May 6th. Exhibit Number 9 is the Watershed Development Permit, which I believe I also handed to the board. Then, Number 14, and I mention this just because I mentioned it in my opening argument, and I'll leave copies for the board, it's just a copy of the previous appeal that was filed to the city of, with the city council regarding the Building Review Board. And finally, and I think this might have already been put in by opposing counsel, I have the Army Corps of Engineers Letter of August 2nd, and I'm not sure I gave that to you, but here's a copy. And I'll get a copy of everything for you, counsel, except the, I'll have an unmarked development watershed. And Exhibit 1, which I'll leave behind, is the plat of subdivision. Thank you.
Guess in similar fashion, I'll... In a similar fashion, I'll just leave one set for all of you. I, the first 11 of our exhibits are in your package marked with our appeal, and so I won't burden you with more paper. And Number 12 is from the workbook, so it's just the one page, and I've got extra copies here, if Michael would hold the... Michael? Pass out these. Sorry, these aren't all marked, but I didn't know what order we were necessarily going to go in. That's Number 12.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Number 13, which I'll refer to, I believe in closing arguments, has to do with the design standards for subdivisions. You may prefer to put your own designation on it, so you can read it.
Thank you.
Thanks. And sorry, this number is 13.
It's 13, this is Number 13. Number 14 is a section of the state statutes that deals with the Rivers, Lakes and Streams Act. The Rivers, Lakes and Streams Act. Number 15, I believe we've passed that out to you already, that's from the Watershed Development Permit.
Yes, we have that, thank you.
And I believe you may have Number 16.
We do.
Already, yes. And more statutory material, Number 17, from the Illinois Administrative Code, Section 17, which 370870 again deals with floodways, regulatory floodways. And Number 19, I did not, this is the zoning code, and I'll, I didn't make copies for everybody, so we will refer to designated.
We have that.
You have that memorized.
Thank you.
17?
And I don't, if we marked the Number 18, I've lost track of it, so we may be out of sequence. Thank you very much for your kind attention this evening on behalf of Mrs. Friedman and us, we do want to appreciate your kind attention. This is a situation that arose some time ago before any of us were in the positions we're in today, before the parties entered into the scene, but that doesn't make it any less of a decision that has to be made by, by this board. And we've talked a lot about floodways and drainage, compensatory drainage areas, this community knows how important drainage is and how important it is to do it right. And our legislature has talked about that and has rendered laws. Fortunately, this part of the country developed in Lake County a Stormwater Management Commission that has undertaken a massive job of addressing these issues. And those issues have to be very, very carefully considered, and, and unfortunately falls on your shoulder to make the decision to enforce those tonight. It can no longer be a buck-passing operation where somebody else has approved a plat of subdivision that wouldn't get past the front door of City Hall today. Someone has made decisions about the water compensation system that has to be put in place, that we're submitting to you is not correct, and if it's not correct, and unfortunately falls on you to say it's not correct, and it's got to be fixed. The way things are measured and why certain areas were created don't make any, maybe doesn't make any sense to me, but you have to put yourself, where the public is, when they read the ordinances that you, you see every time you come in this room and many hours that you study these files, before you come into this room, to ascertain what is, what is meant. And when you get down to the basics, the basic issues that are involved here, we have four principal issues that cry out for a decision by this committee that revokes the permit. And counsel brought up at the beginning and at the end, the fact that his clients have made investments on this property. The condition of this property, when they acquired it, the issues that were existing today were existing then. I don't know what they paid for it, that's, that's, in the bottom line, that's not relevant, but they knew they were getting a problem. And we filed an appeal, and they poured more concrete. If there's an equitable issue, it's not on their side. They walked into this, and they walked into a situation that is blatantly an unbuildable lot. You can look at it and see the floodway, where it's located, this is not an appropriate lot to be built on. And we've talked about, if I may approach, we talked about the, the width of, of the lot and where the access area stops. The access area stops at this 117-foot line, because then it's 170. Now, you have met the minimum lot requirement. You can call this a garden, you can call it a landing pad for a helicopter, you can call it anything you want, until you reach 170 feet, that is part of the access area. And no one wanted the answer of the very simple question. If this access area, and you can foresee someone having 140 feet of access, that all gets counted as part of the access area. It's only when you come to the minimum lot width that you have met the requirement and you stop counting it as access. And Mr. Purnell showed us in the book that you have as an exhibit here, he counted all this as part of the access area, and he said he did that because the city told him to do it. The city told him this was 21,000 square feet, and when you deduct that from 81,000, you get 60,000. You do not have 66,000 square feet, and that's required. It's easy to come back in here after the fact and change your testimony, but the fact of the matter is, they went on record, they went on paper, they submitted to the city, and they were told by the city that's the number to use, and, and that creates a lot that does not meet the minimum requirements. Now, we have this issue of the 20-foot setback. We have to look at that language very carefully. You can, you can, well, let's whistle. And there are two issues that really need to be addressed. One is this applicability. You know, the regulations contained in this section are applicable only to lot-in-depth subdivisions approved after May 7, 1979. That's this one. Except for the provisions of 468D yard requirements, which shall apply to all lots of record unless otherwise designated on the plat of subdivision. That was a way of grandfathering plats that were recorded before 1979. It was to relieve them from what may have been recorded on their plat. It was not to make an exception. You go through the rules, you create regulations, and all of a sudden you create a carve-out for post-79? That doesn't make any sense, that's inconsistent with what the statute says. But if you come down to the yard requirements, the ones they're talking about here are not the fee situation sessions we have here, it's if you have an easement. There are no easements here. D1, the one they're relying on, talks about abutting the lot as measured from the easement line of such access area. There is no easement, it's not applicable. What is applicable is the standard 50-foot setback that's required in C. I'm sorry. Which is required over in 4638, which applies to our four single-family residences, there you have to have a front yard 50-foot setback. That's what applies in this case, and that's why this is not, the construction that's being done is not in accordance with the code. The lot size doesn't meet the requirements, and the setback doesn't meet the requirements. The requirements that have to be depended upon by the citizens of Lake Forest who read the zoning code. The other issue... We'll be very quick about this because I think we framed the issue, and it has to do with the compensatory storage areas. If I may be familiar, Mr. Ramesh, I don't know, Ramesh? Thank you. Said that the purpose of the, if you go, if you go up to the other one, though. 10, 7, 10. No, it's 10, I'm sorry. We looked at this on numerous occasions up in the well here. The engineer for the city, Mr. Ramesh, said, "That's compensatory storage. That's compensatory storage." The man who signed the permit said, "That's compensatory storage." Mr. Reed says, "No, that's grading toward, toward the channel." Well, we know it's not grading towards the channel, it grades away from the channel. Ramesh told us that, our eyes tell us that. And compensatory storage, they've abandoned that argument now because they know, under the state statute, they can't put drainage or flooding relief unless it's an existing structure. This is not an existing structure. Therefore, the work, the compensatory storage in the floodway is impermissible and cannot stand. If we go to Number 7, just give you the comparison. Different engineers reading the same law saw it the right way. The compensatory storages, all in the floodplain, it's not in the floodway, and that's what's wrong with the plan here. The compensatory storage, and that's what it is, right there, that's compensatory storage, that's what was on Manhart's report as compensatory storage. That is inconsistent with the law and with the regulations of the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission. I think for all of these reasons, I, I know the city folks try their best. This is not criticism of them, but they don't get it right all the time. That's why we have appeals. There has to be a consistent approach to these problems. As I said before, we have a problem here that has to be addressed. But ignoring, ignoring what the Lake County Water, Storm Water Commission has dictated, ignoring state law that says you have to have a positive grade if you're going to do any grading, ignoring that isn't right. We can't do that. We have to apply the regulations as they are written. And for all of these reasons, I would ask that you revoke the building permit and ask that the property be returned to its pre-permit condition. Thank you very much.
So that would conclude the closing statement by petitioner. Now, do we have a closing statement by other interested parties?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes, thank you.
Again, I want to thank you and Gopal and Rajul. I want to thank you for your attention in this kind of long hearing with kind of some tedious testimony. And I'll try to be as brief as I can. You know, the petitioner would have us believe that everyone involved in this process has somehow fallen asleep at the switch. And I would submit to you that that just isn't the case. And I want to run through this, the various arguments that they would have made. And I want to start by talking about the buildable area.
The only one.
The only one that seems to have counsel's interpretation as to what the buildable area is, is counsel. I would argue to the folks here on the board that the city council here in Lake Forest in 1981 knew exactly what they were doing when they approved this plat of subdivision. They knew that this area here, this wider area, would be a part of the lot for purposes of calculating what the minimum buildable area would be. There's no other reason for that spot to exist on the plat. They worked with the datas, obviously, so that you could create two buildable lots on this property. And that's what happened. With respect to the building setback areas, I want to go back, just step back here and read to you the section of the ordinance regarding applicability. And that's section 46-8-B. And certainly you have attorneys at Lake Forest that can interpret this for you or help you with it, but it says plainly, "The regulations contained in this section are applicable only to lot-in-depth subdivisions approved after May 7, 1979, except for the provisions of 46-8-D yard requirements, which shall apply to all lots of record." And here's the key language, "Unless otherwise designated on the plat of subdivision." And here, they designated a 20-foot setback line on the subdivision. And of course, Mr. Data must have known when he developed this property that he would have a house fairly near the house that he had, which already existed. And if you look at where the floodway limit is, which is shown on the plat, there's a very small footprint to put a house on. But it's obviously contemplated by both the plan commission and the city when they approved this ordinance and the plat. and those are sections A and B of their appeal. Now, there is a regulatory floodway on the property. I just showed it to you. And there's a floodplain on the property and much of the property is in a floodway. Is in a floodplain, rather. And you, this is permitted. And let's first talk about grading. Grading in this, in the floodway is permitted if it creates a positive slope. You heard testimony that this creates a positive slope. You heard your engineer, somebody who doesn't have an axe to grind in this case, testify that it complies with all of the ordinances. Also, we heard about the watershed development permit in the ordinance. This is their Exhibit 15. And it talks about what the approved uses that'll be allowed in a regulatory floodway. In Item 3A3, says storm and sanitary sewer outfalls. And you saw in the plans, that was our Exhibit 6, where the outfall was into the wall, into the drainage ditch, and that's what was approved. I would also note that the exhibit that you were shown, which had the permit, was from an earlier date than the actual one that was used in issuing the permit. And the only testimony we have is that of Mr. Reed, who says that plan, the plan with the compensatory storage that we see up here, was properly submitted. The city, Storm Water Management, everyone has signed off on this project. They're, they didn't make a mistake. And I want to conclude by stressing the fact that the buildable lot size was determined back in 1981. The setbacks were determined in 1981. The bulk scale, and I, maybe I should take just a minute and say, we used the bulk scale workbook. That was given to us by the city. The way the city wanted the calculations done was to exclude that area that I called the garden area. So you end up with a smaller house. That's what we did. But that doesn't make that access area, that calculation, and that was clear from Mr. Purnell's testimony, that calculation was solely for bulk purposes, not for access area. Finally, I want to talk about the fairness. You know, the Freedmans succeed in interest, their interest to the original subdivider, Mr. Data. And that property was subdivided so that presumably additional money could be made because two lots would be sold, could be built on. Mrs. Friedman knew that when she bought the property. And as she testified, she's kind of freely used that property as her own for the last, however many years, putting a garden on there, storing her husband's equipment on there, putting a sprinkler system on there, putting a fence across it. But that didn't change the fact that it's the Bilalas' property. And they've been trying to develop this property and it would be unfair to let Mrs. Friedman, who took with the same knowledge of what these lots were like, to gain some kind of advantage by saying that the lots are not buildable or the harm that it would cause to her property. She knew when she bought the property about the lot in the back and the house was set up by the datas, the house was built by the datas. And they knew when they built that house, what they'd be looking at when the Bilala property was developed. Again, I want to thank you and say that I don't believe that anybody from the city of Lake Forest missed anything on this. This has been a long and hard project and we've tried to work the best we can with the city and we want to thank you very much.
Would the director like to make a closing statement?
I have no further comment.
Then this is the close of the hearing deliberation and determination by the board. At this point, we will proceed to, sorry, executive session downstairs. We will deliberate at that time based upon the evidence that's been provided. We will not make an oral statement when we return this evening. We will make a written response, which will be available on or before the next zoning board meeting. So when we do return, it will be for a simple, open session to briefly close the meeting officially for the evening, just to let you know.
Excuse me, the signee will not be rendering the decision tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Oh, I'm sorry. And to enter executive session for the purpose of deliberating on the evidence presented, we would need a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote.
Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session for deliberation?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Board member Kristoff, roll the ball vote.
I, I vote to retire executive session to determine the rule of the appeal.
Board member Ziegler.
Aye.
Chairman Carr.
Aye.
Aye.
Board member Dixon.
Board member Kennedy.
Aye.
And absent, board member Frakeson and board member Colquittson.
And absent, Board Member Frakeson and Board Member Colquittson.